I'd like to call regular meeting of council to order, Monday, May 3rd, 2021. A brief look at the agenda, please. Officer Norbury?
That the Monday, May 3rd, 2021, regular council meeting agenda be adopted and presented.
Seconder, Council Majinsky. All in favor? Post. Thank you. Adoption of minutes. April 19th, 2021, regular meeting of council minutes. Recommendation, please. Councilor Majinsky?
The Monday, April 19th, 2021, regular meeting of council minutes be adopted and presented.
Seconder. Councilor Krikalka. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Post. Carrie, thank you. Any business arising from the minutes, council? Staff? Thank you. Moving on to delegations. 6.1, Sandra Rose Bonegrindl, LLP. Jaren Newfeld, District Auditor. Regarding Review of 2020 Audited Financial Statements. Welcome, Jaren.
Thank you very much. I believe you guys have a set of financial statements in front of you there. If you turn to page 2 there, you will see our independent auditor's report. It's addressed to the Mayor and Council of the District of Tumbler Ridge. In it, it states that we've audited the financial statements of the District of Tumbler Ridge, which comprise of the statement of financial position as at December 31st, 2020, along with statement of operations, accumulated surplus, changes in net financial assets, and cash flows for the year then ended. Hand notes to the consolidated financial statements, which include a summary of the significant accounting policies. In our opinion, the company financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district as at December 31st, 2020, and the results of its operations and cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with public sector accounting standards, and for such internal control as management determines is necessary in order to prepare the financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. As auditors, our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. As part of an audit that's performed in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards, we exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism throughout the audit. In addition, we also identify and assess risks of a material misstatement. We obtain an understanding of the internal controls that are relevant to the audit in order to develop our audit procedures. We evaluate the appropriateness of the accounting policies used. We conclude on appropriateness of management's use of the going concern basis. We evaluate the overall presentation of the financial statements, as well as we communicate with those charged with governance, among other matters, the plan, scope, and timing of the audit, any significant audit findings, and any significant deficiencies in internal control that we identify during our audits. So, in other words, another clean auditor's report this year.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, council? Staff, anything? Okay. Thank you very much for coming in, Jaren. Really appreciate it.
No worries. And thanks to you guys, and thanks to Laura and Jenna for another smooth year on the audit. It was our second under COVID, and so everyone's kind of adjusted to the new normal. So, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, staff. Councilor, how?
Yeah, so I just want to ask something of the staff here, just so I'm clear on where we sit with our finances. So, at the end of 2020, we had $34,687,000. We did about $2.5 million in investment in the suburbs of the community forests. And take out your liabilities, we're sitting at $32.78 million. We back out the community forests. Does that mean that we're somewhere in the neighborhood at the beginning of 2020 of about $30 million in asset, or sort of $30 million in cash and investments in the District of Tumbler Ridge?
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. So, it's our cash, investment, and assets. So, our cash is, um, cash is sitting at $12.3, and that's our liquid cash. And our investments are at $19. And then we have the MFA deposit of $31. And then we have receivables of $786.
Councilor, how?
Yep, so that's $34 million. And then we had, uh, net financial assets sits us at $32.7. Am I mistaken here? On page 4?
Yep.
$32.7, $32.8 million.
And then take out the receivable. Except the, you know, we still have to receive that. So, it still shows as, um, like we're receiving that as cash eventually, right? So, it still shows up as our financial assets. So, shy, um, so $2.4, so roughly $3 million. So, $31 and a little bit there.
Well, just over $30 million, right? Thirty, thirty and a half, whatever, three, four, one, however you do your rounding there?
Yes.
So, that's where we sit with cash and investments. But we are at that point in the year, uh, because we collect our money. We collected the money. Sorry, when do we pay the money out to the government that we have to pay out? That we collect from the residents?
One second. All right. We pay that out August 1st.
And so then we're, we got five more months before we would, sorry, seven more months that we would, before we collect again? July?
Uh, yeah, we collect in June, July.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, our next delegation is here. Maxine and the brand?
Pretty close, sir.
Close, sorry.
That's okay.
Presenting to council on PNG's high gas rates in Tumbler Ridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna basically read off this.
Well, Maxine, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, and thank you very much for putting the trust in me and listening to me with what I've been doing here. It's been quite a tour, because these companies are changing and changing, and some want to talk, and some don't want to talk. So, just quickly to let you know that I have spoken with Mike Burney. I've spoken with BCU Utilities. I have spoken with Fortis. I have spoken, underduress on their part, to PNG. I have spoken to a consultant who I was fortunate enough to sit with, who is an engineer working on both the pine plant and the griz plant and all the lines around here, as well as a consultant down on the Sunshine Coast that we know. So, I've been digging and digging and digging. So, right now, I'm just gonna start from the top of this. It's really important that the town knows who they're dealing with. And when I spoke to Mike, unfortunately, because he had been out for 10 years, he was a little bit lagging on his information. So, right now, Alta Gas was acquired, had acquired PNG in October 2012. Tri Summit Utilities acquired PNG and its assets in 2020, and is the new current parent owner. It's made up of the Public Sector Pension Investment Board and the Alberta Teachers Retirement Fund. They have a 60:40 ratio on that. It's not a public utilities. Tri Summit's completed the acquisition of $30 million shares of Alta Gas in March of 2020. Alta Gas was the parent company of PNG and holding this, and all their holdings was transferred to Tri Summit Utilities during this acquisition. That was at a cost of $1.005 billion. And all common shares were delisted from the stock exchange at that point. Alta Gas stocks are still available, however to be found. Tri Summit Utilities does not publicly trade on the stock exchange, because public debt remains outstanding. It also owns the Bear Mountain Windmills, Apex Utilities, and Northwest Hydro. The website states the following, that they own and operate assets with low risk, stable earnings, and cash flows. So, we come down to the questions as to why Tumbler Ridge is paying so much for our gas. And unfortunately, we're not the only ones in the PNG line. Everything from Vanderhoof West also pays extremely high. And that's important with regards to some of the arguments that PNG will give you. So, I'm hoping that this information helps you go forward. Because some of it is going to be really a time-sensitive thing on your part. So, question one. If PNG is a part of a group that has low risk, high stable, or stable earnings and cash flow, then why are our rates continuing to be so high? And what can we get this new parent company to offer or to do to help put our rates in line with what's around us? Are the rates in Tumbler Ridge and PNG West going to increase or decrease? And I address that question, um, just quickly to start. So, I've been told by PNG that the costs are related to maintenance and operations. And it can be assumed that a company that purchases another one will need to keep a steady inflow blowing on there to help pay off their acquisition of that company. They're not gonna start dropping rates when they've got to pay this newly acquired cost. So, the last upgrade PNG did was 2020, 2021, which was authorized by BCU C. And it was for the upgrades, the IT upgrades. Part of this, from what my research shows, was some of the merging with the Tri Summit's other assets that were going around and merge all those systems, but also the meters that went in, things like that. There was a small, um, argument against that increase out of Kidamats and Terrace area in 2021. But they weren't successful on it. There wasn't enough of backing. So, I'm including a short revenue report for Alta Gas and Fortis in this report to show that there are, that the industry claims that the companies are hurting because of the economic downfalls, so they don't have money for this, just doesn't hold strength. So, when you argue with them, um, revenue for Alta Gas last year, or lost in 2019, because that was the last one I could get, was $5.5 billion, with a net income of $840 million prior to the Tri Summit acquisition. So, remember Alta Gas was the parent company to PNG. In comparison, Fortis Inc., which is based in St. John, Newfoundland, they had a combined international revenue of $6.7 billion, a steady incline from 2006 to 2020. Their fiscal year of 2020 was $8.9 billion, which was an increase of $7.64 compared to 2017. Their net income grew 23.93% to $1.3 billion per year, with a profit margin at just shy of 14% and over 18% in the year prior in its three-year peak. So, Fortis assets are $55.5 billion, an increase of $16.02 billion compared to 2017, and a debt asset ratio of 44% in 2020. So, these numbers, although they're not, you know, pertinent to PNG itself, I just put them out there so you see when these companies, like I said, say, "We're hurting, we're hurting." Every gas company I looked at was in the same position. And I bring just Fortis into it, because they're the local player on B.C. So, the Tumbler Ridge Griz Sour Plant, that's been an interesting research, because I've gotten information all over that contradicts everybody. So, PNG has cited that this is the primary expense for our bills, along with the lack of population serviced by the plant. I do have a line in there that says no discussion about the industrial service. PNG emailed me again today to answer that one, and I'll deal with that. So, the sour gas plant was built in Tumbler Ridge, originally Oakwood Petroleum Grizzly Valley Gas Plant. PNG Gas Plant is situated in the Peace River. There's a little blurb about this, 45 kilometers southeast of the town. CNRL owns the plant that's bringing the gas up, and they sell it to PNG, which has the processing plant at the griz site. So, Fortis had an opportunity, according to, I will say, the ex-operation manager, who I mentioned earlier in the conversation. He said Fortis had a chance to purchase the site, and they didn't. So, what I'm thinking happened here is they purchased, PNG had a purchasing it and sold a portion off to CNRL. So, CNRL is bringing the sour gas up, selling the sour gas right next door to PNG Processing Plant. They're sweetening it, and then it's sending it into Tumbler Ridge. According to the former engineer who I met, that worked on both the pine plant and the griz plant, originally I was thinking maybe Tumbler Ridge could buy out and become its own utility, like Wainwright has. But she was telling me that these plants have an average of 25-year lifespan. That one's been refurbished once, and is now at 40 years, getting close to the end of its lifespan again. So, the town wants to stay away from any purchasing or acquiring assets on that one. That is probably also the reason or related to, CNRL is shutting that griz plant down, the sour gas plant down. And it is the largest supplier, the largest customer base for PNG in our area. And this is going to be a problem for us. PNG, right now, is looking how to deal with this shutdown. They are putting a plan together, and this plan is expected to be in place in six months. So, PNG is trying to figure out how are they, what are they going to do with their gas rates and costs if CNRL shuts down this plant? And like I say, PNG has confirmed that they are going to be shutting this plant down. BCU C doesn't have anything to do with that, because they are just the gas provider to PNG. PNG deals with BCU C. So, that's who we deal with. If CNRL shuts that plant down, the question is, where is PNG going to get its gas in order to provide it through to Tumbler Ridge? Okay? So, they will either have to purchase that operating plant and do its upgrades, or find other sources to get the gas into their, into their lines. PNG, as CNRL is now a direct supplier to our households, they don't fall under the direction of BCU C, and only PNG does, because it's providing to us. So, as a provider, they cannot have an interruption to our gas here in town. So, they have to have this plan in place before CNR shuts, shuts down. That's a requirement by BCU C. One of the issues that PNG told me in their email today was, because CNRL is their only and largest customer, this is how they're trying to figure out what's gonna happen with our plants, with our costs. And everything indicated that we're gonna be paying more, that they're gonna be submitting to be asking for more revenue coming out of our town. I asked them about the mines, because it was like, who's providing the heat and the gas to the mines? They only provide to the one mine that's in care and maintenance. So, they are not providing to the other mines in the region. So, that leaves their customer base being basically the sole area of Tumbler Ridge. So, the same engineer that I spoke about, she worked with Enbridge Spectra. And she said it is not difficult for Spectra to tie and bypass that whole griz plant and tie directly into the lines coming into town with sweet gas. So, Dawson Creek, for example, they tee off at Doe River from the Taylor plant. And the sweet gas comes down from Doe River into Dawson Creek, which is why Dawson only pays $5 a gigajoule on delivery, and we pay so much higher. If they don't have sour gas going into that processing plant, they don't even pay for that, right? Those are, our costs are all coming to play. So, if they can get that tied in, if that's what PNG's plan is, to tie in straight into their lines, we're still gonna be absorbing the cost of that processing plant not operating, or if they do any other maintenance and care for it, because they can't completely shut it down as well. So, just be aware that that's coming up on our plate, and it's coming up very quickly. It would also be possible for the town to purchase the PNG asset lines that come into Tumbler Ridge. Because the CNRL is shutting down, it puts PNG in a bit of a precarious spot. They have to figure out, or how are we gonna get our gas, right, to get out here? So, they could be in a negotiating, a negotiating spot, either with Fortis or town or another company. If the town could purchase that line and have Enbridge tie into lines within the district, if it's outside of the district, we'd have to talk to BCU. But it is a possibility that that could happen. But again, you have to get that purchasing from PNG. So, this takes me to, you know, if Tumbler Ridge wanted to become its own utility corps. Wainwright and Medicine Hat both do it successfully in Alberta. And Wainwright makes money and provides very low gas rates to the town. In B.C., there are a few communities that do it, primarily ski hills with propane. But it is possible to be done here. And whether it's wind, solar, or hydro as well. PNG has also cited that the 40 kilometers of high-pressure gas pipeline is a big expense absorbed on our bills. However, I argue that they do maintenance on all gas pipelines. Mike Burney tried to cite that there's a rock slide out towards Kidamats, and that's the reason why Kidamats had higher rates. Well, there's rock slides by Revelstoke, and Revelstoke pays $5 a gigajoule. There's rock slides all over through the mountain areas, right? So, I don't find that that's a reasonable and acceptable explanation. I spoke with BCU C. I had a video conference with them, primarily because PNG would not answer any request for information. They were very good. I've included their names of who I've talked to in here, as well as the engineers and such. So, all communities are entitled to receive utilities at a fair rate, and BCU C is here to ensure that this is happening. They can't deny the company the money to also have safety and have these things operating, though. So, service providers have to submit and apply for and justify any rate increases. In order to be notified of these rate change applications, service users, such as us, have to register online with BCU C and say you want to be notified of rate changes. At that point, once their application for a change is submitted, you will get notification, and you have the ability to do a written argument against those increases, which is something that the town has done successfully in the past and should do on this. Arguments against the increases aren't guaranteed, but if nobody says anything, let her go, right? The members from BCU C that I've talked to, I've kind of put a flag next to Tumbler and PNG up here right now, particularly because PNG would not reply to any questions or comments timely. The one they finally sent to me had only been working with them for a year and didn't know too much over the phone. So, um, again, there's a handful of communities that own their own utilities. There are considerations to be made about becoming your own utility branch, though, regardless of what kind of utility you're looking at. So, in trying to find an answer for our high rates, I tried to find alternatives, different steps that the town could do. And that's why I spoke with Micah Smith over in Gibson. He's an engineer, who happens to be an associate of ours, that we can trust to. What is the procedure for water, for wind, for solar? What's the viabilitys and things like that? So, just to let you know, if you choose to go that direction, the requirements from BCU C that are in here. So, if any portion of the power source owned by the town is located outside of the district, so you've got a windmill, and it's outside of the district land, BCU will be involved and must be involved in everything related to that. Or if you are providing power to anybody located out of the district area, maybe up the valley or something like that. If it's all within the district boundaries, BCU C does not need to be involved. So, you become the board. The town people become the people that can vote you in or out, because they will vote you in and out of the board. BCU C, however, will get involved if you go into conjunction and partnership, partnership up with something else, with somebody else. And they have recommended that you do not do that. They're in discussions with a handful of communities that are in really bad shape, because they're partnered up, and they're sinking, and like, it's just not pretty. So, they said stay right away from that. So, if you do consider anything, do it in totally independently, or let them do it, you know, if Fortis is doing something, do it 100%. Do not go into partnership. What am I at? So, energy options in Tumbler Ridge. We can continue, this is just what I've found out and my kind of analysis of what I've found out here. We can continue to operate with PNG as a gas provider and work towards a better, cheaper gas service by convincing PNG to tap into the Enbridge lines coming from Taylor, write sweet gas right in, and on their processing plant. I don't think that's gonna happen. You know, they're still gonna want the cost of shutting that plant down. The district can negotiate with Fortis and convince them to do, you know, try to purchase out the PNG assets. And again, because CNR, CNRL is shutting that griz plant down, it might put them in a congenial negotiating spot and have a friendly takeover by Fortis in this area versus an aggressive takeover. And then the council can sit and negotiate with Fortis prior to then. Sit down with Fortis and say, "Hey, we're in this situation. We need to make changes. What can you do for us?" And this is all information that's come from engineers, from, you know, other people that I've talked to within this, this whole discussion. So, as PNG continues to cite Tumbler as having too small of a customer base to support, so I feel that Fortis, who's got a very large overall customer base, and again, this is PNG saying, "They've got more customers. They can spread the cost out better." Okay. Maybe it's time we hit Fortis up and join their customer base to have our costs spread out. Then, you know, instead of staying with PNG. PNG has continually cited our small customer base, and yet Prince Rupert, which is way bigger than Tumbler Ridge, pays more than us. So, again, to me, their argument falls to pieces when they keep saying this small customer base. On another end, direction for gas, the district can talk to Enbridge or Spectra about having them supply the district directly and tie pipelines into the district boundaries. Do whatever they have to do to meter at that point, and then the district try and take over those pipeline assets all the way into town. When Wainwright does that, like they've got a plant, an area right in front of the town, they charge, I think it's $15 or $25 a month for every customer, regardless of their usage. And then it's like $3 gigajoule. It's next to nothing. The town of Wainwright, their utility department, is willing to sit down and talk to you guys about that and how it works for them. So, you've got a lot of good people on your side. And again, if PNG is worried about CNRL shutting down, they might be willing to try and cut their losses before they're in a worse position. So, it's a good time to take advantage of that. Are you alternative energy and coal energy sources, such as water, wind, solar, and geothermal? I thought Tumbler would be a great place for this, because we're a geopark, and we've got these great green energies around us. So, when I spoke with both the engineer and, both engineers, actually, they were stating that both of the, all of these sources are still considered unreliable. They fluctuate too much. So, you would either need huge banks of batteries and, you know, ways to store this energy. It's good to use as a secondary, keep the gas going, and then use that as a secondary to feed into it. I asked about selling power back onto the grid, you know, if Tumbler had excess or something was going on. With SiteSeq on still being built, they said Hydro's not interested in buying back. It's such a nominal amount that they won't be interested in that. So, if you are still interested, though, in seeing how you can tap into water, wind, solar, or geothermal, A Fortis is doing all kinds of test projects around. So, another one to say, "Hey, Tumbler Ridge is here. We're open to you coming up and making us a greener community." You know, "Do this for us here, and we'll work, you know, don't go into partnership, but make it attractive. Say that you're open for business," right? The, Micah Smith, for a few hours, he was able to put feasibility to studies together for you. He says it won't take long, won't cost much. But with the data that he has access to, if you really want to look at that, you know, contact him. He'll do the feasibility studies. The other engineer that I've included, that I've spoken to in here, same thing. She has said if the town has any questions on how to deal with this, what's going on up here, she's happy to talk to you about it. She will also give you the information on who to talk to at Spectra to make it an appealing project for Spectra or Enbridge to tie their lines in, and how to make it more attractive for them to do their development to your advantage. She was very keen on, she also is happy to give information regarding the wind, solar, and hydro as well.
Maxine, we've come to a time here.
Yep.
So, I'll just make a motion. I'd up on a couple, but just a motion to continue the delegation. Seconder, please. Councilor Majinsky? All in favor? Post Carrie, thank you. Really appreciate all the research and information you brought forward today. This is definitely an issue that we are going to have to continue to look into. Just a couple of things from one presentation. From what I understand, CNRL is not, uh, shut down the North Grizzly directly feed PNG plants. So, I'm curious on, on the information that you've gathered in that regard. So I'm curious on the information that you've gathered in that regard.
Oh, I got that. Sure. And actually, I was just coming to the edge page here. So the last three pages on that package you have is from Gordon Doyle, who is with PNG. And in there, he states, and has told me that CNRL is the, as noted, the Tumblr Ridge system is isolated and CNRL is the sole supplier in recent years. Not that one, pardon me. Anyway, it came from, sure, it's in there. It was this gentleman that told me that CNRL is shutting down their plant. And that's why they're putting together this plan in six months.
And if that is true, certainly, it's definitely going to have to, some contingencies for sure. Counsel, questions?
I'm a little confused on that as well, is that the conversations that I've had with CNRL at this point has nothing to do with North Grizzly case. My river plant is that I, we were told to shutting down and then, in fact, could slow down in this area. Sure, they would be shut down. So if that's the case, if North Grizzly is shutting down, and I was on the news version that there was sweet gas that was coming through there as well. We do have sour and gaseous direct sweet gas in and then sell it back to CNRL. CNRL doesn't use the normal gas, we understand, has to move the PNG back to CNRL. But that would be interesting, and I know that you and the CAO have the conversations with CNRL at that point, but.
Yeah, no, I certainly will follow up on this. Biggest thing is to gain the accurate information, but also if this is true, that the main supplier is possibly shutting that in, we're going to have to figure something out. Absolutely. Counsel, how?
The other thing that kind of strikes me as strange too is that when Quintet was running, or potentially going to fire back up, they didn't have enough gas. That's what they told us. The plant couldn't make enough gas, so they created what was called a virtual pipeline. And they created a facility that's next to the Quintet coal plant. That the plan was that they were going to haul natural gas in trucks and put it into the pipeline because Quintet was going to use all the gas that was being produced by CNRL. And the rate payer, taxpayer in Tumblr Ridge was going to have to eat the bill of having that additional transportation costs through this virtual pipeline they called it. So I find that funny that they would say, you know, to Maxine that, you know, you guys aren't big enough. But one plant comes on, now we don't have enough gas for everybody, right? Seems a little odd to me, but interesting. Thanks for all your work there.
Yeah, no worry. And I did talk to him about the, sure, I mean, that's the pine plant. I understood they're not shutting down and he's, he was pretty adamant. Yep.
Counselor Kirby.
Thank you, Member Trent. Thank you, Maxine, for all the work you've done on this. When you find an issue that really affects the residents of Tumblr Ridge, you did so much background work. You brought information that's really going to be beneficial to council and staff moving forward on this. I'd just like to thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I say, it's something that council is going to have to step on quickly as this plan comes up because their 2021 budget that they had, they'll be resubmitting to BCUC shortly here. And.
Yeah, absolutely, Maxine. Thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Member Trent. You know, later on tonight, we are going to be discussing a notice motion from Counselor Kirby to reach out to the BCUC. Yeah, we're already making those statements identified by Counselor Kirby, so yeah.
And BCUC has put forward that they are willing to come to Tumblr, either in person or virtually, and do a presentation to all of you with regards to the do's and the don'ts and the stay away froms as you go forward in this whole energy discussion. They had no idea about the CNRL, but again, it doesn't fall under their jurisdiction because they are the provider to PNG. But I didn't have a chance to print off the last email regarding the mines from PNG, but I can print it off or forward it to you if you like there and.
Absolutely.
You can see that one.
Send it to our CAO, Jennifer. Absolutely.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it throws a whole new ball into the picture, doesn't it, right?
Well, it's interesting for sure. I mean, it was my first question when Pine River was being announced of shutting in was, is our supply going to be affected? And every answer I've gotten is no. So I'm definitely going to be looking into it. So I appreciate you coming in this evening. Thank you.
But part of the reason the supply, they can say it won't be affected is because they are required by BCUC to ensure there is no interruption in your gas service. That doesn't mean they won't put another $3 gigajoule hike on your delivery charge, right? So that's the thing that you're going to really want to get onto that BCUC. I want to be informed as soon as they put a filing in there and start putting those arguments through.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, in regards to PNG, you were, you did have a look at the talks collected from district to PNG and, you know, off the top of the head, what that might be?
Thank you, Member Trent. The amount that the district charges back to PNG is only a couple thousand dollars. And what that line is, when we did a quick look into what PNG rates were from the district.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury.
All items in the May 3, 2021 consent agenda be moved for information.
Secondary.
With the exception of items.
Seven point.
Two.
Secondary, Counselor Kirby. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counsel wish to lift anything from the consent agenda? Moving on to bylaws, eight point one.
Oh, we were going to do seven point two.
Sorry, sorry. Seven point two, city appendectomy letter to UBCM. Council directed the discussion on providing a letter to support directly to the premier's office. Forwarding a copy to the appendectomy council to be moved to this meeting. Recommendation, please. Counselor Howe.
I'm very motion forward that we do that letter.
Secondary. Counselor Majinsky. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. And anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, moving on to bylaws, eight point one. Fees and charges, amendment bylaw number 702, 2021. Report dated May 3, 2021, from the Director of Corporate Services, requesting three readings of District of Tumblr Ridge fees and charges, amendment bylaw number 702, 2021. Recommendation, please. Counselor Majinsky.
Counsel gives a first reading of the District of Tumblr Ridge fees and charges, amendment bylaw number 702, 2021.
Secondary. Counselor Howe. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor Majinsky.
Counsel gives a second reading of the District of Tumblr Ridge fees and charges, amendment bylaw number 702, 2021.
Secondary. Counselor Kirby. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor Majinsky.
Counsel gives a third reading of the District of Tumblr Ridge fees and charges, amendment bylaw number 702, 2021.
Secondary. Counselor Norbury. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Eight point two, District of Tumblr Ridge, 2021, 2025, financial plan bylaw number 700, 2021. Report dated May 3, 2021, from the Director of Finance, requesting third reading of District of Tumblr Ridge, 2021 to 2025, financial plan bylaw number 700, 2021. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury.
Counsel gives a third reading of the District of Tumblr Ridge financial plan bylaw number 700, 2021, as amended.
Secondary. Counselor Kirby. Discussion. Counselor Howe.
Again, I cannot vote in favor this time, proposing a $1.2 million deficit budget. Not to mention a further $2.5 million deficit budget next year. Million dollar deficit budget the year after for five and a half, or sorry, $5 million deficit over the next three years. We've got two choices, the way I see it. We either increase revenue or reduce spending. And my choice would be to reduce spending and increase revenue. We could reduce our spending by $300,000 by removing the renovation to the community center front desk. Staff were over budget on the previous project in there by nearly 25%, which was not brought back to council to be approved, but continued through without approval. We could also reduce the budget by another half million dollars by removing the extension to the walking paths out to the highway. It's pretty easy to see our new asphalt isn't holding up. So why would we continue paving before we figure out how to fix the existing issues? This is two cases of fool me once, shame on you, and fool me twice, shame on us. We've got to stop spending money on projects that don't get done right in the first place. We need to fix the issues we have first, and then we can look at spending upgrade. An idea that I could throw forward for an increase in revenue would be adding in some revenue by declaring a dividend from the Tumblr Ridge Community Forest for somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 a year. This gives all taxpayers in all classes a break and puts back into the community of what the community forest was originally set up for. And by doing this for the next three years, it would pay for our high-speed fiber internet connection. So that's where I sit, so I'm voting against this.
Okay. Ms. Thompson, can you clarify the deficit this year, please?
Thank you, Member Trent. So we actually have a, our financial plan is balanced this year at zero. I believe what Counselor Howe is referring to is when we look at our municipal property taxes, they're 9.6 million, and our total functions or our operating expenses are at 11.7. So when we figure in our municipal property taxes, add in what our sale of services are, which are 1.4. Government transfers include grants for capital and special projects, but also grants that we receive for wages and through INDIT and different operational expenses as well. And then our investment income of $440,000 also adds into that. So when we do have that, our revenue over expenses are 5.9. And we are, we do add back in our internal revenue for fleet. Our transfer from reserves is, yes, is $3.1 million that we are looking to pull out of revenue, or sorry, out of reserves. Once we have our principal payments, and then we are putting in 1.9 million into reserves. So it's taking out but putting in, it's shifting a little bit back and forth. And our capital expenditures are sitting at 6.9. So it does show our financial plan at balance of zero. And with our capital expenditures at 6.9, there is, and I don't have the exact numbers right in front of me right now, but we are, some of that is from the Peace River Agreement, which is, we have to use 80% of that for capital expenditures. I believe we're looking at about 3.8 million in requested grants or grants that we've received. There's carried forward from previous year projects that weren't completed in 2020 that are carried forward into 2021 of about 800,000 as well. So none of our capital and special projects are being funded out of current year taxation. That is being pulled out of grants and reserves and carried forward and also surplus of previous years.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, you know, financial statements and numbers can be interpreted in many different ways. So Counselor Howe, can you please explain how you saw 1.2 deficit, please? Counsel.
Yeah, sure. So our CAO had a very long-winded explanation of it, which is fantastic. But it gets lost in translation. The way I look at it is transfers from reserves. We're taking out $3.1 million out of our bank account that we, if we didn't have that money, you wouldn't be able to do it. But we're taking that money out of our bank account, but we're putting back in 1.9 million. So the difference between those two numbers so that we can balance the budget is 1.2 million dollars. So we're taking $1.2 million out of our bank account to put into the, from the previous years, from previous councils saving money. We're taking $1.2 million out of our bank account to put it into this budget so that we can show a balanced budget of zero. But it is still $1.2 million more than we're bringing in. That's how I show a deficit.
Okay.
$2.5 the year after, a million the year after that.
Okay, so it'd be on a cash basis then, cash accounting. That kind of how you look at that? Okay. So Ms. Thompson, can you clarify that? Because, you know, there's cash accounting and then there's accrual accounting. So it's, you know, I don't think we've really gotten into the discussion of how the district and many other communities in the area and the province operate in a surplus capacity all year long. So if you could explain, please.
Thank you. I'm just grabbing the financial statement from last year. So if you want to look, or if you can, pull out the financial statement. So just basically on a cash basis, in 2019, our cash, which is our liquid cash, was at 11.6 million. And at the, in 2020, we were sitting at 12.3. So we increased our cash account by that amount. So we've increased our cash, we've raised the taxes, we've done sale of service, but we didn't have as much expenditure. So we actually increased our cash. So I will agree, we are, you know, taking some of that money out of our cash account. But that is, we've talked about our reserves and how we have our reserves set up. So this year, we are pulling money out of reserves for land sale, which is an old reserve that had been set up, and it can only be used for that. So we're, we are pulling out of some of those reserves to use some of those expenditures, like for the purchase of the Crown Land. And that is previous taxation and when we, the community was built, that reserve was set up. So it would sit there until we're going to purchase land again. So this is our first opportunity, we're purchasing land, so yes, we are pulling that from reserves. So that's money that is in the cash account that we will be pulling out. So it is somewhat of a shift, and I will agree that we are, we would reduce our cash account in the end. That's if we spend every dollar that we put in the budget for operational and capital and special as well. Look back to what we have done in the past. We are, we still always end up with a surplus where we are increasing our cash account at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Counselor Kirkalka.
Just to get some clarity from, so when you talk about some of the reserve, Counsel, they're actually set up to spend the money. Kind of what you just said, right? We have money that's been put into land reserves over time by previous councils to be spent when we decide to go buy provincial.
Correct. That was one example, yes.
Counsel.
How many of those reserves are we pulling out? I know you probably don't have the number, but I'm curious. I am concerned that we are, and I guess everybody adds their numbers differently and can balance the budget. But when you're taking out more than you're putting back into those reserves, it may be a concern because I pushed for it, but I pushed for this walk-in path. But we also applied for a grant that we haven't heard on.
Correct.
Right? So I have a concern that we would put money into it. I voted in favor of keeping in the budget. I think it's a benefit to the community, but they also, I sit up here knowing that I have to ask the residents, oh, why spend money if we're not prepared to? We don't have a budget to do that. And the problem with spending that money, maybe the grant comes in and we do that. But the problem with adding more reserves or taking from reserves to finish the trail line, maybe you have to talk about, we need to buy another older, just clear the snow. We need to have two employees doing snow removal now on trail walkways. Because one of our mandates is that the school zones, or Willow and that other school, has to be done by a certain time during school hours. So my concern is doing that now. We may have to now, may not happen in 2021's budget, but 2022 staff comes up, realizes we don't have enough machinery to clean pathways. We're going to buy a second machine now. And we have to employ another employee to do snow removal on trailings. So I do have concerns, especially when I see that, to me, we are running a deficit budget. I understand how it works with pulling reserves. But I really do believe that we're accountable to that as council. I'd like to hear a little bit more, and I have talked to Ms. Thompson. I don't want to put words into her mouth, just $300,000 for the renovation to that community center. But my understanding is that is not going to be the amount. That report is yet to come before council, because I have questions about PML. And it seems like it's quite a bit lower that they're just doing minimal. Maybe she can answer that, because there's a ticket number that could probably come off here.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Member Trent. So when we did have our capital budget discussions, council had a concern about. the amount that that was in for the renovations for the community center. At that time, I wasn't fully aware of what that is, so I've taken it back to staff and asked, you know, what was in the project, and what we, what can we do in order to make that uh, accessible? So there will be a report coming to council?
Seventeen.
Seventeenth of May-ish, um, sorry, again, this month, um, where staff have created a different plan, because we knew that there was a concern with the amount that that was in for capital. And it, and at this point, from what I understand, it, it will be substantially less, however, when I look at that as well, give me one second.
By, by decreasing the front office, um, it would be decreasing the use of the carry-forward funding. The funding for that is from the Peace River Agreement and the carry-forward funding, correct?
Yes, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, okay. So, do you have, is it gonna be half? Don't know yet?
I, I don't wanna bank on it, because then if I need to ask for more, then I need to ask for forgiveness.
For sure, and, and I just noticed here the trail improvements as well as from, is from the PRA gas tax and grant carry forward to?
Just grant, yeah, it was just, uh, we were applying for that Healthy Communities Grant, two hundred and fifty thousand, and PRA fund, proposed PRA funding, and then a portion from gas tax, yes.
Okay. Councillor Kerkalka, did that answer your questions, Councillor?
It, it did, and I guess it was just, just to re-ask the same question, not the same question, I understand where the fund are coming from the walk path. Now without, if, if it was to be removed except for the grant portion, does that mean we have to go back to the third reading? Like right, right now, it's in there, but if I, if I, the motion goes forward and it's supported, does that mean we gotta start it over again with this thing?
Correct.
Councillor Norbury?
Thank you, Member Trent. You know, looking at the, the general budget, we do have a very large capital spend, and like, rather than getting, I think what a bigger picture thing, you know, we're putting a lot of infrastructure projects into our community, which provides opportunities for people to build and grow in our community, which, which hopefully will help, um, businesses in our community to step up to take on these projects, when they're looking at the, the tenders and RFPs, um, and we're looking at potential economic downturn, I think it is, it is important that we spend within our community to try and bolster our resiliency moving forward. We don't know what the economy's gonna look like, but if we're investing in our town, hopefully we'll, um, we'll come up stronger in the coming years.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Councillor Lehman?
Thank you, Mr. Yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of running a, a negative budget, I, I just, especially something like the walking path, I, I, I just can't see spending five hundred thousand dollars on a walking path, when I think even spending it on our sidewalks in downtown core would be a better ask, I think, and more of a benefit to the entire community, instead of building a path that gets very little use. I can understand if we're sort of forced to spend that money, but if we don't have to, then I'm definitely not in favor of spending it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thompson, are we in a deficit budget in twenty-twenty-one, please?
We are in a balanced budget by using our reserves, so you are saying, I, you know, you, I do agree with you that we can all interpret it differently, right? From our position and everything that we've done, we are balanced because we are using reserves, but when you are looking at strictly a cash budget, then we would be pulling from our cash account, so.
Okay.
Depends on how you look at it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kerkalka?
So if we did not have reserves, would be a deficit budget? If we did not have reserves, this would be a deficit budget?
Ms. Thompson?
Correct.
Thank you. Councillor Kerkalka?
I'd like to put a motion forward that remove the walking path portion of funds being contributed by the district.
Secondaire, Councillor Lehman, discussion? Councillor Howe?
What, what does that mean? What, what are you saying there, Councillor, remove the district portion? Are you saying that if we get the grant, we would do as much as what the grant would allow us to do, and we wouldn't do the district portion, like, can you just explain yourself on that a little bit?
Councillor?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, if, I mean, they've already applied for the grants, and I mean, if they get the grant, there is, I mean, I'm not laying on the trailway, we have them marked on our, on our sheet, the budget sheet that we receive, but to me, if they get a grant, to me, they should carry forward with, with that grant money, and nothing attributed from the district side.
Councillor Norbury?
Can you clarify something with that number is ever removed?
Ms. Thompson, AVO?
Thank you, Member Trent. So the grant that we were applying for was two hundred and fifty thousand, so it would be five hundred and twenty-six less two hundred and fifty, so two seven, two?
Seventy-six, yeah. Okay, that's your question. Councillor Majinsky?
So if we pull up a project of two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of a walking path that we potentially have half of paid for, is that worth it to our community to save to make it a balanced budget? And is that gonna even make it a balanced budget by only knocking off another two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand dollars? I don't think so. I think there's a lot of use on the walking path that we have right now, people would like to do it as a, a circuit, and I think it's definitely gonna help uh, with where it's going. It's gonna go in and around our geointerco sale, uh, trail, uh, it's going to be a complete loop around the community from upper to middle bench, lower bench, and I think it's a very good thing for our community to have, and this is a very low upfront cost right now, but we might not be able to get these grants in the future. And there are, there is one more, I believe, grant that we can apply for, for this as well, so it's actually not that funny to put in a, a walking path, and the ones that we do have are all been repaved, and they're all, they're really good standards, so we may as well continue going forward.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kirby, did you have something? Councillor Kerkalka?
Yeah, and Councillor Majinsky, in one way I don't disagree, but that's why I say to keep the grant in. I would not say that our trails are up to standards, even our new trailways, I, you know, few people have seen me out walking, but just started walking lately, and they are not up to standards, even the new ones we've painted, so I apologize, but I mean, I, I, that's my concern about trying to pull this off. We get a grant, I think that's up to staff to figure out, we drew up, or I got together with some staff, and no council had the two cents to put into that too, that was a choice of course to do it or not do it. It doesn't mean we have to go down along Monkman, they maybe finish the trail up along Kent, if they get the grant. Uh, I, I think there's other options to balance this budget, so that's, that's two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars removed. Uh, Councillor Howe had mentioned in regards to the dividend, I wanna hear a bit more about that in regards to the Community Forest, if that's even, um, some answer, I was, first time I heard it was tonight, and there's still some conversation to have about the community center. I, I don't know the number from staff, I just know I was in and talked to Ms. Thompson, and she said there was some stuff coming forward that maybe didn't have to be done the way the first that we were, uh, report dropped first, what's the most, doing the three hundred thousand dollar rental, that may not be what's needed. So again, another set of eyes came in, seeing something different over the Community Center in regards to doing the area in the front, and I think we might be learning something new. I think that was one of the pushes, and it's actually in our budget, that they can't spend that till they come with, forward with that report, and again, another set of eyes is gonna, I think it's gonna really open us up to half a hundred plans, I just asked about it again.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Norbury, then Howe?
Thank you, Member Trent. And I do understand we're trying to look to be actually, um, responsible, but I mean, this, this project, if we're only funding half of it, and only get half a trail, I don't think it's, you know, we, we talked before in, in length about the project down at Flatbed, and how, um, you know, doing half a project wasn't what we wanted. Whereas I look at this, and like, I do see the merits of it, um, and again, I think it's important to have these projects to grow resilience in our community, to um, offer projects for companies to be sustainable, so I feel favored keeping the entire budget for the budget.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Howe?
Could this grant money that we're talking about go towards fixing the downtown core, or is this particular grant have to be for some type of a bicycle path, or bike trail, or whatever, or could it go to the downtown core?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Member Trent. So it is the Healthy Communities Initiative, the next application deadline, or the next application of May fifteenth closes June, so I would have to look into the complete criteria of it, but it is to get people out to healthy, so I would have to look into see if we could use it for downtown core or sidewalk replacement, I'm not sure if it's just capital, or if it is replacement.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Any other motions? Councillor Kerkalka?
I don't have another motion, but can we hear more in regards, and I'm not sure if Councillor Howe had talked to staff ahead of time or not, regarding to the dividend that comes out of the Community Forest, or maybe Councillor Norbury may even know that? I don't wanna put them on the spot, so don't take that long, I'm not sure about it, I'm curious about this dividend that Councillor Howe had talked about, is something we can look at, is that even doable?
It's, um, it would be, uh, I, I can add a little bit, I'm sure Councillor Norbury can add as well, um, that would be a, a company policy as far as the Community Forest goes, uh, to give a dividend out each year to uh, invest as well into the company, so, Councillor Norbury?
Can you give a little insight, like, I know that it's possible to request a dividend for the Community Forest, but beyond that, um, my bad, um, the only thing that I would mention is that the revenue generated from the Community Forest is not set every year, so like, there are times when we are holding back our cut allowance, because cut allowance is, uh, I don't mean to go off my tangent, but I mean, there's an opportunity to talk about, so, you know, cut allowance for, for a certain amount of years? Some years we'll use more, some years we'll use less, and I think coming in, we'll use zero. So we actually didn't harvest at all to hold out for opportunities like last year, when the costs were up. So there is opportunity to, I think, enter in discussion with Community Forest about those sorts of feelings, but to commit to, um, you know, a set term, maybe challenging in that to be able to limit the Community Forest's ability to generate the maximum amount of revenue, um, because they're forced to harvest and seal it back.
Councillor Howe?
And the thought that I had on the revenue is, is uh, Community Forest has about three point six million at the end of this year, based on their budget, three point six million dollars. Now I know a portion of that has to be held back for siliculture, uh, but regardless of that, when we talk about a number, I just threw the number out of three hundred thousand dollars, because it matched what we had talked about for a high-speed internet proposal in the past, uh, so three hundred thousand dollars, yeah, there'd be some years that they don't make three hundred thousand dollars, but the profit they're thinking of making in two thousand and twenty-one is about, just shy of six hundred thousand dollars, so it's about fifty percent of the money that they're making there. Maybe it doesn't have to be that much, maybe it needs to be quarter million dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, but the Community Forest has, has good revenue in there, belongs to the district, and if we've reached a point where we think maybe it's time to start pulling some of that money back in, I would just assume that the Community Forest have all that money, if they could get some type of a, a sawmill, or a plant, or a pellet mill, or something going with it, but if, if, if we've been told over and over again that we don't have the, enough wood to be able to pull that off, what's the point of all that money sitting in the bank account there? If we can't use it to go back into the residents' Tumblridge, we can pull some money back in here, so we don't have to tax anybody any higher. Some of the money that, that we gotta look at, and see all these trees being cut down around our community, at least you can go back and say, hey, listen, it keeps your taxes lower by three hundred thousand dollars a year for some of that stuff that we're doing. That's, that's just a thought, not that it has to be pulled in immediately into this budget, but it's the thought to think about going forward. There is opportunity to increase our revenue, which doesn't happen very often in a community without increasing taxation, so it's just a thought process that we can possibly do.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion in regards to budget? Okay, so Ms. Thompson, we are going to have to put on hold the meeting then, the amendment? Okay. So we did have a special meeting. Ms. Thompson?
Just one second. If council wishes, um, we can do third reason, third reading as amended.
Yeah, I think that would save us a meeting, I believe. Councillor Howe?
So in the budget, what, what do we have in the budget right now for the community center renovation at this point? Is it still in there at three hundred thousand?
Ms. Thompson?
Two hundred and fifty thousand is the amount for front office and lobby upgrades at this time.
So that?
Councillor?
So as Councillor Kerkalka mentioned, this, this has to come back to council to approve what they're gonna do, and, and at that time, is there gonna be like stages or options for it? Is there gonna be like, if you wanna do the, the bare minimum, cost you twenty-five thousand, or if you wanna do the, the, the gold-plated front end for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we can do that? Is there gonna be some graduation in there, so that we would know that we're not gonna go over the two hundred and fifty thousand? Like, I don't understand how last year, we have a budget of a hundred and ten thousand, and then we come back in and we say, hey, it's a hundred and forty thousand, sort of. How do you, when we set a number in a budget to say you cannot spend more than a hundred and ten thousand dollars on a project, that you guys can just come back in and say to us that the budget went over? Should you not have to come back in on every individual project that's a special project, and ask for uh, additional money, similar to what we did with the Sign project? Mr. Powell had, uh, came in, was concerned that the costs were gonna go higher, he presents it to council, sorry guys, this didn't work out as we thought, then we approve it. How come we don't do that in that, that situation over there, and we just get stuck with a bill?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Member Trent, through council. So I, I do understand what you're saying, and so staff will be going forward, either we need to create better tender documents, and, and have better reports to council saying that this is what we're expecting the cost to be. If there is something that does come in and is gonna be over budget, it will need to be brought back to council to say, hey, we came in at, we thought it was a hundred and ten, because at, when we're at budget time, we have taken educated guesses a lot of times, so sometimes we like to be, you know, we usually add contingency in. If it is something that's coming in higher than what it is, then we will come back to council, say, you know what, yeah, it came in at one forty, however, we want that one ten, and we have thirty from here that we can move to here, and, you know, bring, bring it back to council, why it's, why we feel it's over budget, and, or the, the tender came in higher than what we were budgeting, and where we're gonna find those funds from.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so I'll move that council give third reading of the district to Tumblridge Financial Plan by Law Number seven hundred, twenty twenty-one as amended? Secondaire, Councillor Kerkalka? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. I think I got that. Okay. New business, nine point one, Statement of Financial Information Report, dated May third, twenty twenty-one, from the Interim Director of Finance, providing counsel with the twenty twenty-one statement of financial information. Any of council like to discuss this? I'll move it for information then, secondaire, Councillor Kerkalka? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Nine point two, Naming Rights Proposal, Pump Track Park Facility, updated May third, twenty twenty-one, from the Director of Corporate Services, requesting approval of the naming rights for the mountain bike Pump Track in Tumblridge. Councillor Kerkalka?
Yeah, I'd like to excuse myself.
Thank you. Recommendation, please? Councillor Norbury?
The council approves the naming right proposal submitted by the Tumblridge Mountain Bike Association, and that council got its approval, principle, to the Tumblridge Mountain Bike
And that council got its approval principal to the Tumblr Ridge Mountain Bike Association as per Tumblr Ridge Freshmark in the Pump Track Park Facility.
Second? Counselor Lehman? Discussion? Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Member Trent. I'm in favor of this. This is the first time we've seen a naming rates policy come into play.
Go ahead.
And, um, it sets the bar, $30,000 for 30 years. Interesting to see what else we can come across from things.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Howell?
Just, I'm just kind of curious, the 30 years that I've lived in Tumblr Ridge, the grocery store has changed names about six times. So, just curious. No, no, no disrespect, but could they just change the, if it goes back to a Shop Easy or a Tomboy? Or, you know, can Super Value, can they change the name on that under this agreement?
I, I would assume it would be a sticker at the top of the old one, but, um, you're right. I mean, it, it is, that, that was my biggest concern, reading this was a 30-year term. We could add in options of five-year renewals, uh, in case of any changes possibly. But if council's, uh, comfortable with 30 years, okay with that too. Comments? Lot can change in 30 years, most definitely. Is it, uh, no, that's, that's also assuming the life of the asphalt in 30 years. That's, that's pretty ambitious. I, I certainly don't want to be riding that thing on the 29th year, I'll tell you that. Possibly that too. That's really my only concern is the timeline. Counselor Norbury?
If the two parties are agreed with it, you know, they're, they're happy with it. Well, I mean, uh, maybe 10 years and we come something else. Put a top sticker on there or whatever.
Ms. Thompson, is there going to be some flexibility written into this, uh, contract to give us the ability to make changes within that 30-year period?
Make changes to the facility? Or the agreement?
The agreement. Just in case of a name change possibly, or, uh, is there any kind of flexibility going to be, um, brought into this agreement?
I believe so. And I know we've talked before that, um, you know, if a sign goes up and it needs to be changed or whatever, that it would, you know, we would have wording written into it that it would be the responsibility of the sponsor or, or naming rights to, to replace that sign. So that would be built into it.
Okay.
Not quite sure if that answers all of your question, but there will be some flexibility built into as to whose responsibility it is for replacement and upgrade.
Okay. Yeah, because the district is responsible for initial signage, right? So if there was change, I believe, that's what I read. Is that not correct? Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Member Trent. I guess it's a great question, uh, posed by, uh, Counselor Howell. But I guess it'll go down in a piece of history. It's like, what's Freshmark? Well, that was that gross, that grocery store we had here 10 years ago, just like that Vinnie's is still Vinnie's. You know, I guess they're buying that little piece of history for 30 years.
Yeah.
Or, or, or maybe if the, you know, there could be some leeway down the line if it, if this moves out. But for now, they've got 30 years.
Okay. No, I, I do like the fact that the association is bringing this forward. It was really, um, their initiative and, and, um, their due diligence as well as, um, you know, if you see their sponsor level package there, it's quite comprehensive and, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to see the engagement there. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Gordon. 9.3, April 2021 Arena Usage. A report dated 3/21, Recreation Services Manager informing council of the arena usage for April 2021. Would like to discuss? Counselor Howell?
Have for discussion.
Second? Counselor Krikalka, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Counselor Howell?
One thing I'd like to point out, it was pretty good that the revenues increased quite a bit from, uh, May, sorry, from, uh, March until April. Uh, but $700 only covers roughly 10% of what we're trying to get out of the arena. We're in a position right now where I just argued that we need to cut things out of the, our budget. And I think this was one of those things that during COVID that we gave the kids an opportunity for an extra month. I think it was well-used during that time, but I don't think going forward for the summer, as much as I use the arena, even though, uh, I don't think that we need to continue with those costs going forward. If the cost to put it in and out were a little closer, maybe we might have an argument towards that. But, uh, I don't think we can go forward anymore for this point. But it was a, a good, uh, good, uh, try at it anyways to see how it would work and if we would have any condensation issues or anything like that. The way I understand it, it actually went pretty smoothly, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and it was an opportunity for our residents to use while the pool were shut down as well. So, um, all in all, I think it was a good information gathering, uh, opportunity. Any other discussion? Thank you to staff for putting together that, uh, information as well. 9.4, Fire Service Mutual Aid Agreement to Report, dated May 3rd, 2021. Director of Protective Services, requesting council's authorization for the execution of a fire service mutual aid agreement with the PRRD and other South Peace Communities. I do have an update on this, uh, in regards to the last, uh, regional district meeting. Um, there was an amendment made on the motion, um, to, uh, enter into a five-year agreement instead of the one-year agreement. So originally there was some questions that Dawson Creek had in regards to this. So the one-year was approved to give us the opportunity to get those questions answered. They have been answered and the amendment was made to, to go straight to the five-year term. So, uh, I'd like to move that council authorize a fire service mutual aid agreement with the Peace River Regional District, the City of Dawson Creek, the Village of Pouscoopie and Toms Lake and District Fire Department Society for a five-year period from the date of execution. And the council authorizes the mayor and chief administrative officer to sign on behalf of the district to Tumblr Ridge. Second, your Counsel Kirby, discussion? Counselor Howell?
So a bit of concern for me is, one thing I'm curious about is it, is it equipment and manpower or just equipment? Or a possibility of one or the other? If they needed our ladder truck, they needed it for a week, we can't staff it for a week and have our services down here. So would that just go to the city Dawson Creek while they're fighting fires? And our volunteer firefighters come home when we leave our piece of equipment that taxpayers Tumblr Ridge have paid 1.2 million dollars for and let the boys in Dawson Creek have their way with it or?
Yeah, Ms. Thompson, can you ask chief to kind of clarify and, and, uh, give his two cents on the agreement and, and what it's actually for? Please?
Yes, thank you, Member Trent. Uh, I just will respond in, uh, regard to our ladder truck. Um, staff had answered within a governor's considerations that our ladder truck would not leave the district because of its specialized. Just for that one, I know it was an example. So, yeah, I'll pass it over to Chief Curry. Chief Curry?
Thank you.
Your worship, council, good evening once again. So to answer Counsel House's question, it is for equipment and personnel. Uh, the intention with the mutual aid agreement is so that it's not an extended duration event. So if they have a structural fire that, uh, they needed us on scene for 12 hours, that would be agreeable. At any given time, the, uh, the, the giving department, if let's use that word, can pull back their resources at any given time, um, to protect their town proper. So if we sent our engine, for example, with four firefighters and, uh, it was evident that we needed them back here at any given time, I can recall, um, from whatever incident they're responding to. As the CIO said, our ladder truck is a no-go. That is specialized, it is a tenet purpose for target hazards identified in the community. It has a specialized purpose as such and will not be eligible for, uh, this agreement. In the case that there was an extended duration event, so we have a wildfire in Dawson Creek, we would fall under the provincial guidelines for reimbursements at that point. And that, that actually does include staff time per hour based on the memorandum, memorandum of agreement with the province. This agreement is, is kind of unprecedented. We haven't had a mutual aid agreement in writing since Quintet and Bullnose were in operation. That was the last signed ones. And I think it was in the 90s that it was actually signed. Knock on wood, we haven't had the need to, uh, activate mutual aid. But that's not to say that that's never going to happen. Right? I'd rather be prepared, as I'm sure most of all of you would be, uh, for the event that if we did need additional resources, we didn't have to cut through a bunch of red tape prior to getting them sent.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, and from what I understood at the PRD board table, it was to establish this mutual aid agreement just in case there was a situation where an incident is in between two communities, who responds? Questions are asked, it's all outlined in the mutual aid agreement. I see it as a very proactive move by, by the region and the departments in the region to really ensure that, um, resources can be combined if needed in the event of an emergency. Counselor Krikalka?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I think mutual aids are great. I mean, I think the, where we're located makes it tough in regards to travel. The amount of, the amount of travel. So I think council needs to be aware of that. I'm not saying you're going to see the goat all the time, but when you, when you have an hour and 20 minutes around the time to drive just to Dawson Creek to wear and tear on an engine or wear and tear on the rescue unit, even the command vehicle. We, we, uh, had that discussion in this budget in regards to replacing some of the supplymen. It means that turnaround replacement could be quicker. So I think council is going to be aware of that, but I think mutual aids are great. Like you, uh, I was surprised we didn't do mutual aid when I first came to the community. I come from an area, but I mean, obviously our, our communities are closed, so it would be more sense. But, uh, no, I'm grateful. I think, I think it's great that we're offering mutual aid and they offer it. It's just a huge success for.
Absolutely. Counselor Howell?
So when that revenue would come in from the city of Dawson Creek or Pouscoopie or province at some point, somebody would pay the district Tumblr Ridge for the use of our equipment, correct? Or our manpower?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Chief Curry.
So under the, um, mutual aid agreement, there is no cost recovery, um, outside of consumers based on mutual aid. Understanding that if we had something in Dawson Creek, send an engine, we're not going to send them a bill for, or they're not going to send us a bill, we're not going to send them a bill. If it is an extended duration, uh, event, a wildfire, for example, we fall under the province at that point. And then at such time, we would actually get reimbursement rates through that memorandum, memorandum of understanding. So it wouldn't be coming from the city of Dawson Creek. Now, what's contained in this, uh, agreement is that if I use $3,000 worth of foam or I, out of negligence at the scene, I go through fire hose or something like that. We burst lines and things like that. Those consumables can be recovered, anything in excess of $500 can be recovered.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Okay, so the thought is, uh, if we did get money back from the province for a wildfire or something like that, is there any way that we can have a mechanism set up that that money directly goes into the reserve fund for fire equipment? Rather than into general revenues if we go directly into, you know, replacing the, you know, the equipment?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Member Trent. We could create, uh, a policy that would state that. However, the amount that we would actually get in revenues, policy tends to be forget or forgotten sometimes. So I would like to find an innovative way to remember to do that. We could create a policy, but I can also tell you that a policy sometimes gets forgotten.
Sure.
And it wouldn't be a lot of money sometimes. It might be a thousand, it might be more, right? Um, so it could be into the future on it.
Counselor?
So the mutual aid agreement, I, I understand the, the, the benefits behind it. I'm trying to look at the downside of it. And, and to me, I look at, the city of Dawson Creek is, is on, is in financial trouble right now. They, they are on hard times. They don't have enough money to, to pull their budgets together. And we are, are, is there any concern from this council that we are going to be the ones helping them out a lot more than they are ever going to be the ones helping us out? And, and do we care about that? Or do we care that, you know, we would go out once or they would go out 10 times? Or, you know, has it even ever happened? Have we ever needed to have anybody in the last five years? And, you know, like when, we, we talked about moving the training grounds in this council from, you know, to a new area to the, to the waste transfer facility to the dump so that we could possibly sell that land off over by the hardware store. And at that time, we were told by our operations manager that that would affect response times. So how would us sending a fire truck and our volunteer firefighters, if you don't have enough of as it is, to Dawson Creek affect our response times? You can't tell me that our response times wouldn't be affected by having a fire training center down at the dump as compared to where it is and not going up to Dawson Creek to do fire response out there. That, that's, that's the downside of it for me. It all sounds good on surface, but, and I, and I'm not real comfortable with the five years either because are we, are we stuck in it for five years? If we find out that we've had to go to Dawson Creek 10 times in the year and they've only had to come here once, we're not really getting a benefit at that time. And, and not that we need to get necessarily a benefit from it, but I don't want it to be cost for our taxpayers to fund them.
Ms. Thompson, can you ask chief what kind of scenarios would, um, initiate this kind of mutual aid? Like, I, I really don't see this agreement, um, being put in place for the cities to call on the rural areas for extra resources. So if, if we could just get clarification there, please.
Thank you, Member Trent. Chief Curry?
Your worship, council, there's a bunch of questions in there. I'll try to remember as best I can to model through them. Uh, right off the top, uh, we will not be sending firefighters and equipment out of town and leave the town unprotected. So response times will not be affected. We'll guarantee that right now, that with either a command vehicle or, uh, an engine out of town, we have redundancies in place. We have standard operating guidelines that dictate the amount of personnel that we need to have in town prior to doing anything outside of our municipal boundary. This includes our road rescue agreement with the province as well. So that's not going to be ill-equipped. In all likelihood, we are, there is going to be very little effect or call upon Tumblr Ridge to affect a mutual aid outside of our boundary. It has not happened in five years, in, in the last five years. Mutual aid is more common, like Counsel Krikalka said, where you have, uh, communities that are in closer proximity to each other. So Pouscoopie provides mutual aid to Dawson Creek, Taylor provides, uh, mutual aid to Portinjol, right? It's the, the bigger ones. And for in our, in our case, we have nobody. So to have that in writing to say that, yes, we may have Dawson Creek with their spare engine and their paid-on-call firefighters, chances are we're not going to get their career firefighters. We're going to get their paid-on-call or Pouscoopie with a tender because we don't have a water supply outside of. So we have an additional resource that now we have access to. We are likely going to be on the receiving end more than we would ever be on the given.
And, and also this mutual aid agreement was, uh, spawned from, uh, a, a meeting with all of the regional chiefs? Can you speak on that a little bit, chief, please? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Member Trent. Chief Curry?
Uh, Your Worship, you're absolutely right. So this is an initiative that came out of, um, the regional district primarily acknowledging the fact that there's a lot of, uh, dead space between areas like ours and Dawson Creek. There's no other, uh, department that provides that service in there. Who's going to put out a fire between here and Eris? Oh, it falls to BC wildfire and sometimes they're just too busy elsewhere in the province to do that. So we would have the ability to lend mutual aid in, in those cases. It was talked about extensively. It was divvied up between the northwest piece and then the south piece region in order to try and make it, uh, logistically feasible in, in our areas. Understanding that just proximity, proximity to, uh, the communities is, is going to play a factor, right? We have a structural fire here at one of our condo units. And we fully understand that it's going to take two hours for our neighboring department to show up. Our neighboring department being Chetwin is also volunteers, so we may not even have them. So we have to reach out to Pouscoopie, Dawson Creek to send additional manpower, right? The, the faster we can get that manpower on the road, the quicker that we can try and make. make a stop to that. And we're talking two hours on something that large, it can really, really make or break the actual save.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilor Kerkalka, did you?
Yeah, I was actually, Chief Curry pretty much answered. It's not about, it's not about a benefit to anybody, it's when you need it, you want it. As I said, it's not going to need your own community shore, but the same aspect, you know, there could be huge fires in Dawson Creek and they need some manpower. Maybe they don't need any of the equipment, they just need the manpower. So again, I think it's a benefit for any group to be part of a mutual aid when it is for a fire or not. I think it's a great thing. I think it would be a benefit.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'm in support of it. I like, I really like the idea. If our neighbor calls for help, if he doesn't leave us a disadvantage, we're going to lend that help.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilor Majinsky?
Just one quick question. With volunteer firefighters like Eris, are they involved in this as well? Because we're talking about all the communities, large communities that have, what about all the volunteer ones? Are they involved in this as well? Or are they involved as well?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Chief Curry?
Your worship, so Eris actually operates as kind of a own little entity. They're a fire brigade, they're a society, they don't, they're not formed under any local government. And that's where this agreement is primarily based in, the agreement that way. So the Peace River Regional District is representing Tom's Lake and District Fire Society. And the Eris Fire Department was included in the talks for it. If Eris did contact for mutual aid, it would likely be coming from Dawson Creek. And I'm sure that at that time, they would look at their own resources and base the need upon, or base their response upon that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Call to question, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. 9.5, listing another undeveloped district-owned parcel for sale. Report dated May 3, 2021, from the Director of Economic Development and Tourism, requesting approval to list an undeveloped parcel for sale. Recommendation, please. Councilor Howe?
Council approved listing district lot owned lot 2, Plan 3, 1190 for sale.
Seconder, Councilor Lehman, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Schedule meetings? Ms. Thompson, the special meeting is set for tomorrow? No, Wednesday? Thank you.
Wednesday at 9:00.
And we have Quorum, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm unable, I have to work, so. Okay. So that was the only thing I saw missing on the schedule. Other issues there, council? Notice of motions? Notice of motions this evening? Okay, 10.1, P N G delivery rates. Councilor Kirby brought forward following notice of motion. Councilor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd like to move the recommendation that staff is directed to review P N G's delivery rates for the district of Tumbler Ridge and provide a report on the process of request of British Columbia Utilities Commission reduction in delivery rates.
Seconder, Councilor Norbury, discussion? Councilor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I think after Ms. Van Brant's report to council tonight, I think this should be passed.
Yes, I agree. Any other comments? Call to question, Eva? Opposed, carried, thank you. Counselors' business? Any counselors' business? Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I have two that I'd like to speak to. First is regarding to the Southeast Health Services Society. We did change our contact number for people who have upcoming medical needs in Dawson Creek. I have that on social media, I sent it to everybody. I mean, I sent it out to our physicians. So the number is 778-691-8400. For anyone who has an upcoming medical appointment and need a place to stay. So it can be used for multiple stays, it's in partnership with the George Dawson Inn until we get that, until we get the building up and running, which we should hopefully, with the P R D releasing funds, should be able to complete this year. Thank you, Mayor Bertrand.
Excellent. Any second?
Second is in regards to the community forest. Since our meeting, I have stepped down as the chair of the community forest. In turn, our co-chair, Al Paganis.
Al Paganis, okay. Any other counselor's business? Counselor Howe?
Are we, is that 11.1 there, Chris, that you're talking about now or are we moving on to 11.1?
No, 11.1 is basically just information. And that was from the last board meeting, right? So the new information you brought was in between the last board meeting and now? Counselor Howe?
I just got a question about a couple of things here about the community forest. Do maybe Councilor Norbury or the mayor or C E O can answer, I'm not 100% sure how this works, but why are the votes to give away the money in the community forest done in closed and not in an open meeting? We, in here, we have to do everything in an open meeting when we give funding. Why is it in the community forest that they insist on going to closed so that people can't see their votes? Why is that?
Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. The threshold for requirements on open and closed meetings are different for corporations. You know, as, I can't exactly remember when that changed, but there were concerns by directors that they felt their opinions on certain topics are reflecting back at them negatively in the community and prefer to keep those deliberations in the open, which is not my problem.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Howe, sorry?
And just another one there also, it was the, Councilor Norbury, you probably have to answer to this one there. Apparently, there was a, an update on criminal record checks in your open agenda that the community forest decided to move to closed without a vote. Is there any reason why you were moving stuff to closed that's from an open agenda?
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. When the agenda was made, we, there was an oversight with having a legal discussion open that shouldn't be closed, taking from our actions in this council. Legal discussions are considered confidential and not open to the public. So at the time, I made the decision on why to move that to closed. As liaison, feel it is my responsibility to update council on closed matters. I'm looking forward to at an opportunity, but at this point in time, that's why I'm sitting.
Thank you. Okay, and for me, the P R D meeting was my counsel. Sorry, Counselor Howe, did you have some?
Yeah, just one more there. Just curious, there were a couple of grants that were discussed at the community forest. One, as I understand, was the Geo Park and the other one was for the Ridge Riders. Are you able to discuss either of those in open today, Counselor Norbury?
Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Yes, as those decisions were made, the community forest has approved a grant to their Geo Park for $125,000. And the grant for the Ridge Riders was for $100,000, which was not approved. We have approached the Ridge Riders and look forward to them applying again.
You had said 125 for the Geo Park? I thought it was 85. Is that correct?
Excuse me, yeah, thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Then the original request is 125. And during the discussion, Geo Park updated us about $85,000, in which they are, as they have multiple grant requests out to different area directors, other funding sources, if they receive funding from those sources, they would reduce the amount required or reimburse the community forest with those funds.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Howe?
Well, I have a bit of a concern with the Geo Park going to the community forest to get the rest of their funding that they needed. I think first and foremost that the Geo Park should have absolutely came to the district of Tumbler Ridge first if they needed additional funding. I was under the impression that the community forest couldn't give funding for wages, and the way I understand it, that's what this is for, this is $85,000 for wages. So I don't understand how the community forest was able to even do it in the first place. But to me, we are the partner of the Geo Park. Like, our logos are together. The Geo Park is on our Welcome to Tumbler Ridge sign. If the Geo Park needed some money, they should have came in and approached us and not the community forest. We have a policy in place in here that says the community forest will not approve anything that the district of Tumbler Ridge has already not approved. So I feel that what's happening is the workaround is that instead of asking council, go ask the community forest first. So that's their workaround, so they don't have to ask us first. And I feel the same thing's happened with the snowmobile club. We already gave the snowmobile club $100,000. What'd they do with that money? We don't have any opportunity to come back into the snowmobile club, for instance, and say, what'd you do with the previous $100,000 that you gave? What's wrong with the snow cap that's destroyed? What's wrong with the snow cap that has all the controls removed in it? What's wrong with the snow cap that no longer works that we gave you $100,000 for? So then we ask the tough questions of them when they come back in because we know the amount of money that we gave out previously, and then we can make the decision on giving them any more money. When they circumvent us and don't come in here and go directly to the community forest, there's no oversight from us as a council. They can just go get the money from them. Same as the Geo Park. The Geo Park should be able to come in here. I understand there was something that happened with the P R R D, there was no funding available through the P R R D. So who do you think swings the bigger hammer? The district of Tumbler Ridge when we go into the P R R D and say, hey, we need you to help us out with this? Or does the community forest? They don't. It's us that swings the bigger hammer, and it should be us that makes those decisions. I have a real concern about both of those things, even going forward through the community forest without coming through council first. It doesn't give us an opportunity to weigh in on stuff, and I don't think that that's right. We're supposed to be partners with the Geo Park.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Mayor Bertrand, there's a couple of comments that Counselor Howe made that I'd like to address. Community Forest does have a policy, but it is not a set in stone policy in regards to funding operational costs. If someone was in attendance to the presentation of the Geo Park, that full funding amount is not, only under half, right? So with that, the community forest has in the past, in times of need, has built in the policy the ability to still fund it even though we prefer not to, gives us that opportunity. So we're not in conflict with policy. Without going, without reaching a closed deliberation, the will of the shareholder is always discussed at our deliberations. Myself as a liaison, I definitely, I bring forward councils, discussions, deliberations on certain projects. For example, the Geo Park, I did bring up how council dealt with the renewal contract. There's always paramount in the community forest that our grants, givings, align with the shareholders and we would not give grants unless we felt them.
Okay, thank you. I definitely hear your concern, Counselor Howe, and it is a bit of an assumption to say that they did go around us in some regard. It's possible that they chose not to come here for that extra funding because we chose not to give them an extra $8,000 on their contract. There, you know, there's, it's possible. That is another assumption as well, so. The community forest is a funding option for any nonprofit or organization like that, so it was an option available to them, so is the electoral areas in the regional district. I do see this as bridge funding, and I do like that caveat in there that if any other grants are received, that the community forest is paid back. So it truly is a bit of branch or bridge funding in my opinion. But I don't, I disagree with the going around it. I'm not 100% familiar with the snowmobile association, but I'm just speaking in regards to the Geo Park right now. Any other comments? Ms. Thompson, any questions and answers? Have you?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I have none.
Okay, thank you. Resolution to closed, resolution to move the meeting into council closed to the public. Recommendation that the meeting is closed to the public in accordance with the community charter, section 91 I and J, as follows. I, the receipt of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And J, information that is prohibited or information that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section 21 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Seconder, Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Ten minute recess, please.